Okay, everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right, Clerk Roll Call.
Trustee Niordowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Present.
Trustee Watecki. Trustee Dante.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Present. Just a comment there. Greg, Trustee Watecki called and he is sick. So, he said that he could try to come in. I said, no, given, given the current circumstances, it's probably better if he just stayed home and observed the, watched the YouTube presentation tomorrow. Okay, we're going to go to any public comment. There being none, let's go to consent agenda. I'd like to get a, if, if, if there is no request by any of the trustees to pull anything from the consent agenda and address it individually, if there is none, I'd then like to get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? No? Okay, Roll Call vote.
Trustee Niordowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, minutes. We have the August 17th regular board minutes. Is there any, well, is there a motion to approve it, then we have a discussion. A motion to approve?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Does anybody have anything that needs to be addressed in the minutes? If not, let's do a Roll Call vote.
Trustee Niordowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, we're going to go to the presentations at this time. Dean, if you could go ahead and, this is part of that series of presentations that we've been doing. Well, just on a rolling basis, we're going to have different departments come in, talk a little bit about what they're doing, kind of what they're, what, what they have done, what they're planning to do, and anything that they feel we need to know. And today, it's the Adult and Family Services, and Dean will be doing the presentation for us.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. My name is Dean Reschke, and I, up till a year ago, was the clinical director here, and formally retired then. This is primarily, Trustee Dante, for your benefit, and then was hired back part-time to do a lot of transition work for the department. And so, one of the joys I have tonight is not only introducing Robin Wilson, who's been here over three decades as a marriage and family therapist, but also the person that we recently hired to replace me, who is Luann Pross. And I'm going to invite Luann up for just a quick second to say something about herself. So, come on up, Luann.
And you, when you speak, you can take your mask off, though.
Good evening. My name is Luann Pross. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and I'm a certified addictions counselor. I'm very happy to be coming on board as the clinical director of the adult counseling and family counseling program. I have many years of experience providing therapy services and also supervising licensed social workers and licensed therapists, working with clients of all age groups, from age three all the way up through their eighties, late eighties, also a wide variety of different client populations. All of my experience has been working with clients in the northwest suburbs. I was raised in Elk Grove Township. My family's been living in Elk Grove Township for 55 years plus. I was educated, educated in Elk Grove Township. About three years ago, I moved back to Elk Grove Township, and I am just, just thrilled to be able to have this opportunity to provide my best years of experience and education to its residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I just want to say, Luann, we're really excited about you coming on board. Dean has said these wonderful things about you. Great experience, great supervisory experience. Like you said, you're a local, which is great for us, that we, we feel that there's a real value to that. Dean's big shoes to follow, but, but he's, he's really feels he's got a, a real great follow-on, and we're excited about having you on board.
Thank you. So what I'd like to do is just take about 10 or 15 minutes and explain to all of you just what it is that we do in the Adult and Family Counseling Department. Who are we servicing? Who comes to us for our assistance? And just a little bit also about how we work. So, the first thing to know is that all of our staff through the years have been highly trained, credentialed, and fully licensed. And we have literally thousands of hours of training. Every two years, we have to, to maintain our licensures, have 30 CEUs. And so, everybody is always up to snuff and trying to stay ahead of the literature about what's going on in the field. So, you have to know that we are a professional staff. Another thing that's kind of important to me is to know that we don't operate in isolation. Okay? We're part of a, kind of an umbrella of services in Elk Grove Township and in a wider community. And we're, we're one piece of that. And, and we have referral networks and collaboration that are both internal and external. And, and the first thing I'd like to comment on is the internal. We love the fact that we can walk down the hall and talk to our social services department, and vice versa, because many of our residents with concrete needs, you know, oftentimes need counseling on top of that. And we also have people that come in for therapy services that have concrete needs. And so, one of the important, and I think laudatory, things from Supervisor Mike Sweeney, was he had a vision of trying to get all the services the township provides under one roof. And with your leadership, we got here with this building. So, there's more than just the building, it's the ability to work together collaboratively with the other folks here that are providing services. You see GA, food pantry, transportation, other things. We also do network with agencies outside of the township, and this is important. Now, our township does fund quite a number of, partially fund quite a number of other not-for-profit agencies and the like that provide specialties, okay, that we don't provide, and vice versa. So, you know, whether it's a wings, or a shelter, or lifespan, Catholic charities, there are things that other folks do that we can send our folks to, and vice versa. So, there's really an umbrella of services in the community, and we're one piece of that. There are also larger agencies that we network with, which Juvenile Court, Police Department Social Workers, and, and the biggest one, I would say, is the school systems locally. We have very solid relationships with the schools. And let's face it, every kid has to go to school. And so, that's often the place where problems come to people's attention, and they're referred to us. So, how do we meet the community needs? You know, over these many years, we've provided low-cost or free counseling and therapy services for literally thousands and thousands of our township residents. And it's really kind of amazing to me how many people have walked through our doors. And you don't hear a lot about it necessarily, but we are, we offer something different, too, than a lot of other places. So, we're very proud of that. We've been doing it over 45 years, and we're happy to just continue to meet the community's needs. So what do residents experience when they walk in our doors? First of all, again, thanks to this beautiful building, they, they find themselves in a very professional-looking building. They're met by professionals who are acting appropriately and professional. And they find a welcoming environment, which is really important. We don't want to be a place that scares people away. They'll meet a non-judgmental therapist who is not going to present themselves in a way that, oh, you're just a number, you're just somebody beneath me because you're here. Not at all, just the opposite. We listen to people's concerns, their concerns. We don't try to impose ideas on people about things. We want to know what their concerns are and what their goals are. During the first session, it's really typical for us to be asking, all right, if we're helpful to you, what will be different in your life? Okay? What, how will this, how will we know we're done with therapy here? And if that takes two sessions, and after two sessions, things are better or moving along the line towards that goal, we don't have to tie them up into counseling forever. That's not our goal. Our goal is to help them solve their problems so they can get back on their own path. We do very much try to focus on strengths. Lots of people come in not feeling good about themselves, feeling judged about, by lots of people, family, friends, neighbors, strangers, about themselves. And we are not going to be doing that so much. We're going to be focusing on strengths because everybody has strengths. And it's important to leverage strengths when you're trying to help people make changes. Again, we try to resolve issues as quickly as possible, and, you know, it's not unusual for us, after four, or five, six, maybe 10 or 12 sessions, that people are ready to leave. And we always say the door is always open, and they do come back. They might come back in a year or two with a different problem, different child is giving them fits, and that's not unusual, too. So, if we give them an experience that they found us to be a welcoming, helpful place to begin with, they're more likely to pick up the phone and give us a call than, than somebody else. So what are the most common problems that people do call us for? You know, this is something that is in no particular order, but some, these are the things that we tend to see most of: anxiety, depression. In anxiety and depression, we see a lot with high school-age kids and some junior high kids. And with depression, as young as six, seven, eight years old, too, which is something we weren't seeing as much 25 years ago, but, but we're seeing it more now. And I will say, and I'll speak more to this in a minute, but with depression, a lot of our seniors that are involved in our counseling program are really isolated, and they've been experiencing nothing but a series of losses, and losses of power to do the things that they used to do. And one of the byproducts is naturally going to be depression. And by talking to a therapist, we give them at least an outlet for them to make connections, to know that somebody's out there listening to them and offering help. So, I would have to say number three on our list, child misbehavior is the most common reason people call us. Parents are calling us, saying, I can't get my kid to listen to me, or my kids are driving me nuts. Okay? This is well over 50% of the calls we get. And I'll speak more to that in, in just a minute or two. Next is school problems, and then there's couple and family conflicts, and, and as I said before, senior isolation and challenges. One thing that we have done through the years, too, in addition to just basic counseling services covering those kinds of problems, is ADHD screenings, Attention Deficit and Hyperactivity Disorder. Believe it or not, it's a real thing. We can show you spec, brain scans of kids that have ADHD, which measures brain activity level versus kids that don't have it, and you can see it. Okay? And 7% of kids probably have it. And so, through the years, actually early on, we, we discovered that a lot of parents were bringing kids to us with concerns raised by schools about inattention or impulsivity. And so, we decided we needed to get good at being able to make a judgment or an assessment around that. So, the problem is with the majority of our clients, to get a full neuropsych test, it'll cost well over $3,000, and insurance won't cover it. So, what do they do? They're stuck. So, we, we have a very solid protocol for doing what we call an initial ADHD screening. And it involves having parents and teachers fill out surveys that are scientifically based. We do some computer testing, four computer tests specifically, that give us good data on whether or not there's an issue with inattention or impulsivity. And then we compile everything, share it with the parents, and then share it with the physician or psychiatrists. And this has been quite a service that's been used. Over the last 20 years, over 500 kids have come through our place to have a screening for ADHD. And you know what's kind of gratifying for us, and, is that we'll bump into parents from time to time, who will say things like, you know, am I glad that we came to you 15 years ago, or something like that, because my son is now, we figured out what was going on, why he was failing all his classes in school, we figured it out, and you helped us do that, and now he's a very successful lawyer, or successful this, or successful that. And that, that's very gratifying, because it, you know, it can make a big difference in people's lives. So, parenting, this kind of gets back to a little bit of the child misbehavior stuff. We have focused so much of our time on trying to support and assist parents who come in with, with that challenge, shall we say. And Robin and I are the first to tell you that parenting has been the most difficult thing that we've ever done in our own lives. And, I mean, you think, you know, there, there's all kinds of books and all that, and you can read all that stuff. And, and guess what? When you have them, it doesn't all fit nice and tidy. And, as a matter of fact, my, my oldest was always pressing limits at our house, and, and I had a parenting book around, and when she was nine, she hid the book. Okay? So, so we, we have sort of an attitude of, and we share that with the parents that come in, is that, you know, it's, it's the hardest thing we ever did, and, and we're with you on this, okay? Because it's amazing how little control you actually have when you've got these people that make up decisions, make the minds of their own. They may even have neurological issues like depression, or bipolar, ADHD, things like that, that get in the way of their behaving the way you'd like them to. So, you know, the, the thing they say about parenting is though, that by the time you're experienced, you're unemployed. And we kind of feel that way. So we help parents set, get control. And it's amazing to us how we have families come in with five- and six-year-old kids that run the household, okay? And, and our job is to try to help parents to, to actually be in charge, to the extent that they're able to. And we do help them set and enforce limits. And, you know, we do still see, and maybe more now than ever, I don't know, is lots of parents don't give themselves permission to, to be the bad guy, to, to go ahead and set and enforce limits. And I know that your child isn't always going to be happy with that, and, but it's so important, because when they don't do it when they're four, or five, or six, it's so much harder when they're 12, 13, 14, and 15. And in some cases, there's very little they can do, the older the children, yet. So, we do help them set and enforce rules. We do focus on positives, again with the parents. We have the parents focus on positives. You know, when I, Robin and I love to go out to speak to groups, and we've done it through the years on parenting, you know, group of 10 parents, group of 100 parents, doesn't matter. There's certain stories I tell, and one of them is the story about when I was like eight or nine years old, and for some reason, in the middle of the summer, I decided I was going to go start the lawnmower and mow the lawn. And I get around about two lanes of cutting, and I see my dad coming out to me, kind of walking briskly, you know, and, and I stop. And he pulls out his billfold, and he pulls out $2. Of course, this is when $2 is actually meant something, right? And he said, I want you to know, this is for mowing the lawn, but more importantly, for mowing it without being asked, right? So, he noticed me, and most kids do kind of want to please their parents. So he had me. I'm, from that day on, till I left for college when I was 18, I mowed the lawn. I never was asked. It just needed to be cut, and I did it. So, you catch more bees a lot of times with honey rather than vinegar, and kids need that positives. And sometimes, parents get so caught in what's going wrong that they kind of lose sight of what's going right. So we, we tell parents all the time, catch your kid doing something right, you know? Catch them doing something well or competent, so you can give them a pat on the back for that. So, we also help parents to, you know, really to try to stay cool, because when we give our talk on getting control in your house, or discipline, we're really, a lot of times, talking about parents controlling themselves. And a lot of parents will come in, and, and we ask, you know, how they handle things. They might say, oh, well, I yell at them all the time. I'm really strict. And Robin and I have the point of view of, actually yelling is a weak position. Action is strong. Yelling is a weak position. So, and you know what? I yelled at my kids. I, you know, Robin yelled at her kids from time to time. I, you know, we all do that when we get really frustrated. But we, what we try to do is replace that kind of emotional exchange with the parents being in charge of their own emotions, and being very methodical about, and intentional about setting and enforcing limits. So, we do ask parents, and we do help them to actually listen to their kids better, particularly as they're going through adolescence and high school. And we do help families build better connections with each other. So, one of the most important things I want to leave you with about what we do, and leave the community with, is that, you know, most problems are normal. People come in, people have lives, and being a part of living is full of problems. So we, we want people to know that just because they feel stuck or have a problem of some kind, doesn't mean they can't go out and get some help to get back on track, to get back to the rest of their lives. So, we, we'd like people to know that they can just, you know, give us a call. We're absolutely willing and ready to sit with them, side by side, to work through their problems, so they can just get back to their lives. And so, with that, about what we do, and a little bit about how we do it, and who we serve, we'll be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dean, for the explanation. That's good for me, for learning curve here. The only question I, I have is, with regards to the counseling, when, when the children need it, as it comes with school, are, are the counselors having the, are the schools having the children come here, or are we going out to the schools and preemptively talking about this stuff and/or helping the children that need help?
Both.
Okay.
So, and that's a really good question, because we've found that outcomes are better the more we collaborate with school. And some kids can't get here, and they've got families that aren't organized enough to get here. And we've been asked by the social worker, they're never going to get into your office. We say, well, we have legal requirements. We have to, you know, we can see a kid without parental permission for five sessions, according to the law. But we want parental permission to be able to do that. We have something signed, and we're all square that way. But yes, but most of the time, they come. But we also collaborate with the social worker psychologists at the school, too. They want to know if they refer to anybody that, whether the family made it or not, whether they're working, or whether they're just sort of, you know, kind of washing their hands of it all. And, and while the, while the school psychologist is thinking, you know, oh, they're getting therapy now, and they're not. So, we really try to collaborate a lot with those folks, and we're very good at follow-through and follow-up with that.
Thank, thank you.
For the board, you may want to mention a word or two about any fees or anything like that. And then finally, you, it, like it says in here, that the psychiatric services were a gap?
I'm glad you caught that. Your first question was about fees. We, you know, we, for a number of years, we operated on a sliding fee scale. And it went from $5 to $85. And most of the clients that we saw were in the $5 to $20 range, based on their income. We didn't want fee to be getting in the way of them getting a service. This is a service, right? And so, but, you know, with COVID, I went to Mike Sweeney, and we actually were fortunate that we were able to very quickly transition to teletherapy within two weeks, basically, after March 15th of, you know, last year. And, and I said, you know, given all of the challenges people are experiencing, and they can't get into the office because we're in a, we're shut down, effectively, can we do this, and can we offer it for free so that we take away any other impediment? So, actually, since then, it's been free. And I think it's just a wonderful service to, to be able to offer for free. In terms of the gap, I, I listed there, but, but I didn't really touch on it. One of the service delivery gaps that we've experienced for a long, long time has been psychiatric services for, particularly for kids. You haven't been, you know, kids who are severely depressed, ADHD, other kinds of things that might be a neurological biochemical problem going on. All the talk therapy or great parenting in the world isn't going to fix it, okay? It's just not. They need to be able to have access to a psychiatrist. The best they can do around here and around most places is eight months to, before they're actually seen by a psychiatrist. And, you know, you've got a second grader, they'll lose a whole year of school of failing. You've got a 14- or 15-year-old girl, and she's cutting on her arms, and she's very depressed. Can't wait that long. Okay? So, we, we've been actually working behind the scenes to try to solidify some partnerships, okay, that are going to narrow that gap for Elk Grove Township residents. And there will be more coming about that in due course, but that's something that's such a high priority, because it's such a big need locally, that we want to try to fix that as much as possible.
Are there any other gaps, as you see them, that are worth mentioning?
Not really.
Good. Any, any other questions to the board? That was a very good presentation, Dean.
Yeah.
Very good about showing us what you do, but also putting some context around it.
Right. Happy to do it.
Thank you. We're going to make you come back and do all.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much, Dean. And welcome, Luann. She'll give you this presentation, so you're... Okay, the next is, we've got Mesro Insurance Services here. Welcome back, Michael.
Thank you, Supervisor Bussie, fellow trustees. It's great to see you all again. For the newer trustees, I'm Michael Bayland with Alliant Insurance Services. We assist the township and provide a competitive employee, or a competitive employee benefit program for the full-time employees here at the township. So I put a packet next to everyone's manila folder, so it's in this turquoise Alliant. So we'll be talking about numbers, what's changing, what's going on with the market. But first, I wanted to compliment Dean on, on his presentation. Talked about the challenges of parenting. I, myself, am a new parent. I have a one-month-old at home. And while it's fantastic and rewarding, it is outrageously challenging. So I might be calling Dean for a couple tips and pieces of advice. So if we look at the folder and look at this sheet here, we're going to spend the majority of our time today talking about the medical insurance. That renews December 1st. Vision, with VSP, also renews December 1st. And then dental, with Delta Dental, renews in January. And to begin, I wanted to talk about a couple COVID updates, and how Blue Cross is handling, you know, certain aspects regarding, regarding COVID. So number one, so when COVID hit, carriers, Blue Cross in particular, started pivoting and making some adjustments on how they deliver care. And one big one was telehealth or telemedicine. And they, they waived the cost-share requirements for people calling in and getting telemedicine services. That actually ended in the middle of August. So telemedicine didn't end. People can still access it, but they'll have applicable co-pays, or deductibles, or co-insurance for telemedicine services through Blue Cross. COVID-19 vaccines, whether they're being delivered at an in-network or an out-of-network facility, those are still covered at 100%. So employees who do wish to get vaccinated, they do not have to pay for it. It's covered in full... It's covered in full. And then one other relatively new mandate that the White House came out with a couple of weeks ago is a vaccine mandate for employers with over 100 employees. So this does not apply to the township. Your employee count is below that 100 number. But it's been a relatively controversial mandate about making public and private sector employers requiring their employees to get vaccinated or provide a negative test at least on a weekly basis. But just did want to mention that it does not apply to the township, but an example of some, some additional federal legislation coming out on COVID. If you flip to the next slide, or slide, next page, I wanted to give a little bit of background and color on the program. So the Blue Cross renewal, again, it's December 1st. The increase this year is 6.42%, which is pretty typical for our smaller group clients renewing in the latter half of 2021. Frankly, COVID has hit some of our larger clients a little bit harder. So some of our larger school districts and other public entity clients. Smaller group clients in the township is a good example. You guys are a little bit sheltered from some upticks in claims and utilization because your rates are pooled with other small employers in the county. So when you do see an influx in claims utilization, so COVID inpatient stays is a good example of that. You know, that's shared with the other participating employers in the pool. So while some larger clients might be getting a 20% increase or a 30% increase, that has not happened in the small group market for plans renewing in 2021. We'll see how that kind of goes into 2022, but that is, that has not really hit groups yet in, in 2021. To provide some context, we did go to the market to get competitive bids and competitive proposals from other carriers. United Healthcare came in at a 1.41% decrease, and I'll get into that in a little bit. And we also got a couple of declinations from carriers. So Cigna declined to quote, their minimum is 25 enrolled employees. The township is below that. And then UHC All Savers, which is their level-funded product, and Aetna, their level-funded product, both declined to quote citing that public entities and townships are actually ineligible industry to be, to be covered by them.
What's level funded?
So level funding, it's, it's really a hybrid between being fully insured, which is what the township is today, so you pick a plan, pay the premium, and self-funding. So some larger groups, they self-fund their group medical plan. So they're actually really the insurance company. So they pay claims, but they buy stop loss on top of that to mitigate their risk. Level funding is kind of in between that. So it's a self-funded chassis that feels and operates like a fully insured product. So you pay your, pay your premium, but behind the scenes, it's more of a self-funded approach. The biggest difference between the product or the, the program now with Blue Cross and level funding is that there is individual underwriting in the level-funded world. So we have gone down that process in the past, going through underwriting. And rates unfortunately did not come back competitive at all. So that has to do with, you know, ongoing risk within the population, an older population. Those are really the kind of the major differences between the two. I did want to give a little bit of, of history on increases enrolled employees, and that's the next, next part down. So back to December 1 of 2015, there were 14 enrolled. And that's when we actually added a third plan option to the mix for employees to choose from. The, the best renewal the township has gotten since 2015 was actually in, in 2018 when rates actually went down about 6%. And it goes all the way up to the renewal this year with rates going up 6.42%. Delta Dental, that renews 1/121. We actually just got confirmation today that those rates are going to be staying the same. So that's kind of, that's hot off the presses this morning. And Vision with VSP, these rates are going to be held until December 1 of 2022. So another year before those rates are subject to renewal or subject to an increase.
I heard you said Delta Dental renewed on 1/22, right?
Right, right. Oh, I'm sorry. I meant, I meant, I meant January 2022. Yeah, yep. All right. So before I get into the numbers and the renewal, does anybody have any questions for me? General questions, anything like that?
We have two, two new members on the board. Well, one of them's not here. Two new members of the board who are, this is totally new to them too, so.
Got it.
Whatever detail you need to go into, go into it.
Fantastic.
Because I forget it all anyway either.
Sounds good. So the spreadsheet's here outlines the Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal. And again, that takes effect December 1. So a little, you know, background on the program. So the township offers three plans. Two are high deductible health plans or HSA plans where the township contributes HSA money to employee HSA accounts. And the third plan is an HMO. So an HMO program, it has a smaller network and people that participate in the HMO designate themselves a primary care physician. And that doctor coordinates or refers all medical care through that one specific doctor. So three plans. Health insurance by no means is a one-size-fits-all. So we're happy to, to offer three plans that are kind of uniquely different to the staff. So Plan 1, so this is the HMO. So the plan design itself is, is a very rich plan design. That's a $0 deductible with 100% co-insurance after that. But again, some people love those benefits. $0 deductible, 100% co-insurance, but you have to have your primary care doctor. And that doctor is the gatekeeper for, for that person's healthcare. So some people like that, that, like it that way and some people don't like it that way. Plan Design 2, so this is the first high deductible health plan with a $4,800 deductible with 100% co-insurance after that. This is attached to Blue Cross's large nationwide PPO network with access points in all 50 states. And then the third plan design, this is called the Blue Options HSA Plan. So employees here actually have access to two networks. The Blue Choice Network, which is a smaller trimmer Chicagoland-based network, as well as the large nationwide PPO network that I was just talking about. And again, the increase among, or across all three plans is a 6.42% increase or an increase in total premium of about $13,000 annually.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, so Plan Design 3, you say is Blue Choice and, and PPO.
Correct.
So with PPO, as I understand it, you're pretty much allowed to, to go wherever you'd like or see whatever doctor you'd like.
Yeah, so the, the large nationwide PPO network, frankly, it's hard to go out of that network. So all the larger teaching facilities, especially in the Chicagoland area, so Northwestern, Rush, University of Chicago, Loyola, they all participate in the PPO network. Not so much with Blue Choice. So a lot of those larger teaching facility hospitals do not participate in Blue Choice. But the way the program is, or the, the plan is actually organized is that employees are incentivized to go to Blue Choice providers. So deductible is less, their cost sharing is less. But you still have the security of that overall larger nationwide PPO network.
That answered my question. Thank you.
Great. So if you flip to the second page, this page outlines the offer from United Healthcare. So really, the way I look at competing carriers is, it's kind of two ways. Number one, financially, does it make sense to entertain a switch? So looking at the total premiums.
Say it again. I'm sorry.
Sure, so I, the way I like looking at other carriers is, is kind of two ways. So the first is looking at it financially. So is there cost savings there to warrant taking a closer look to see if it makes sense for the township and its staff? And total premium with United Healthcare is actually below current premium today. So it's a savings of 1.41% or savings of about $3,000 annually. Now, there is some disruption. You know, whenever you change carriers or whenever you're evaluating a different carrier, you're going to have plan design disruption, different deductibles, different copays, different networks. And the way that we organize it here is anything you see in red would be a benefit cut from current. And anything outlined in blue would be a benefit enhancement from current. So looking at the HMO, okay, so the, the network for this HMO is Navigant. It's a very comparable network to the Blue Cross Blue Shield HMO network. But when you look at the plan design, instead of a $0 deductible, it's a $500 deductible. Instead of a $1,500 out-of-pocket on this plan for an individual, it's a $3,000 out-of-pocket for this individual, or for this, for this plan. Prescription drug copays are going to be a little bit different. But the plan itself is very similar. So it's a gated plan, have to have your primary care physician. United Healthcare just calls their HMO products Navigant products. Moving down to Plan Design 2. So this plan has the Core network with United Healthcare. So Core is very similar to Blue Cross's PPO, but it's not quite as robust. I think a good example of a, of a hospital that does not participate in Core is University of Chicago. So they are not part of the Core network. Then you'll see the plan design, deductibles out-of-pockets below that. So on Plan 2, the deductible is actually a little bit less and $4,000 per individual. But the out-of-pocket is higher. So it's $6,500 for an individual versus $4,800 today. And then finally, Plan Design 3. This plan has a in-network deductible of $4,900 and an out-of-pocket of $6,750. So again, I know I'm throwing a whole lot of numbers at you guys. You guys are probably like, what is Michael talking about? But again, anything in blue is an improvement. Anything in red is considered a cut from current.
From, from your perspective, the, the improvements versus the, how would you say, it lost, or reduced coverage? The increased coverage versus, or not coverage, but reduced, the benefits versus the non-benefits, when you look at them, given your experience, how does that play out to you?
So in my experience, Blue Cross is, has and continues to be the leading provider of group health insurance in the Chicagoland area in the small and mid-market segments. You know, they, they really do dominate the market, taking up about 70 to 80% of market share. But there are other, there are other carriers out there. With United, actually, one, one difference that I have yet to point out yet is a change they made to all of their small group products beginning in 2021. And they're migrating all their small group clients to a smaller, more limited and closed prescription drug list. So what does that mean? So that means that there are a lot of exclusions on prescription drugs that United Healthcare would not be covering, that likely would be covered today under Blue Cross. So this is in across-the-board, small groups in, in the Chicagoland area. They're now on this trimmer, what's called a central PDL or prescription drug list. So I'm not saying that's, that's good or bad of United for doing that, but they did do it. And that could be a, some, there could be some disruption there for the staff should United Healthcare become the carrier for the township.
That, that isn't a generic issue. That's strictly, they don't cover certain drugs for certain issues.
Correct, correct. Now, the way that they kind of pitch it is that they do have covered drugs for any kind of diagnosed illness or injury. But a lot of name-brand medications are just simply excluded, excluded from coverage.
So they claim that they have medicine for virtually any diagnosis, but you're limited to a specific, if the doctor prescribes this, if you, if you want a, you gotta go to, you have to go to that is what, what they provide.
Exactly. So here, here's our prescription that we cover for this situation or for this illness, and this is what you would take. Now, disruption-wise, I think the networks are very comparable to what's going on with Blue Cross today. Probably the, the biggest difference, in my opinion, would probably be the prescription drug differences. I know I'm talking relatively generally and I can.
No, that's not, yeah.
Yeah, and I can, you know, send the actual list to, to show the township what these excluded drugs are. But it is an important, you know, point to, to make, you know, especially tonight.
The overall cost issue is not particularly dramatic in terms of the differential and total cost to us. The, there are, as small differences it seems in, in some of the, you know, the cost that not covered or covered and what the cost is, but they don't seem to be outrageous. But there does, there, but you do have the, the disruption moving from one to the other.
Sure.
And also you have, there is, like you said, a difference in terms of the, the RX, so to speak.
Correct.
And our, and our, our employees are, are obviously used to the Blue Cross Blue Shield. I mean, so it, to me, just off the top of my head, it doesn't seem like there's any advantage to United Health that would justify a disruption in terms of us switching from one to the other. That's just me talking off my head. I mean, obviously.
Yeah, like I was, sorry, but like, for example, unlike the HMO there, the United Healthcare, what, where's the advantage to switch into that? Is that less money for the township to pay? You said, it says, for example, like it says, you know, individual deductible is $500. Where, you know, under the, if you renew the Blue Cross, it's zero, for example. Why would we go to that? Where's the advantage for the township? Do we, was the township pay less?
So on the HMO side, just comparing.
The HMO, yeah.
Yeah, just comparing HMO to HMO.
Yeah.
United's offering is not as competitive. Their, their pricing is not all that competitive. And the plan design itself isn't as rich as Blue Cross is.
And you don't mix and match. You take all Blue Cross Blue Shield, all UCH?
Right. So what, what, what we tried to do is show you, all right, well, if you did go to United, how could we do as, to the best of our ability, an apples-to-apples transition? So United as an example, they don't have a $0 deductible HMO. But we wanted to show one because there are two individuals that are currently covered on the HMO. So really, the price savings is more in the two high deductible plans that are outlined below it. But trustee Keenly, I, I agree with you that the United Healthcare HMO is not nearly as competitive as, as Blue Cross is.
And where do we have our participation in these programs? Where, where, where are our employees heavily? Or where, where, what, what is the break, breakout in terms of utilization?
They're right down at the bottom there.
Oh, at the bottom there?
Yeah, at the bottom of each page.
All right, yeah, I didn't see that.
Yeah, so enrollment, so going into the renewal, you know, 17 employees are participating in the program today. Two are in the HMO. Six are in that Plan Design 2 or that first high deductible plan. And then nine are in Plan 3 or the second high deductible plan.
All right, so this is a good time to ask Michael questions. We're not going to be, next meeting is we're going to be more directly addressing it and perhaps making a decision. But at this meeting, it's largely informative so that you can, you know what to be looking for and how to make a decision.
Michael, it's been my experience coming from Blue Cross. We were at one time an employee-owned company with 3,400 employees.
Sure.
Switching to United Healthcare because we happened to, at the time, have some contract work with them.
Okay.
And, you know, it was my experience going from Blue Cross and Blue Shield, switching to the United Healthcare, even at that level with that many employees, that it, it just, it was a train wreck. And it wasn't even, it wasn't so much regards to the prescription. But there were some fine details that you couldn't even go to a particular hospital that, that you happen to be blocks away from anymore either because they just flat-out didn't want any, any, anything to do with United Healthcare.
Yep.
So it's not just the prescriptions. There's other elements there that, that obviously you're not alluding to that, that are in the fine print. Am I, am I correct?
Absolutely. And, and anytime a, a switch is entertained or is actually executed on, you know, the devil is always in the details, like, like you were saying. We, we are agnostic, Alliant, so we don't have, it's not our job to point you to Blue Cross or to point you to United, so we're, we're agnostic in that situation. We just want to make sure that we're providing competitive. We just want to make sure that we're providing competitive benefits at a reasonable price for the township and its employees. Now, now back to United, I don't mean to turn this into a bash United kind of situation because we have clients with both Blue Cross and and with United. But yes, you know, we we have had probably more customer service issues and plan designs, things not being covered issues with United than Blue Cross. I think that is their their reputation and it probably is warranted, whether it's more upmarket like like your situation or in the small group arena, like with the plans that we're we're evaluating now. And then kind of the way I I look at it is, well, all right, well, what's the what's the price savings? And is that price savings worth the disruption and worth the switch? And that's not for my, that's not my decision to make, but my opinion is that it, no, it it probably is not.
Is there, Paul, Erica, is there any feedback you can give us in terms of the the employees' experience with the current programs we have?
I think that everyone must probably be disappointed if things change at this point just because everyone seems to be comfortable and has their doctor network and everything seems to be culture with Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
And we have gotten some people far from the issues. I know if there's if there's ever anything that comes up with an issue that, you know, can easily be answered, you know, like Erica, she told Michael and that's, you know, I hear about it, but I can't remember that we've had a problem with an employee having any kind of problem with health insurance for a couple of years.
And the three options are adequate for people?
Well, that's something, Michael, I have to remember to ask you because if you know offhand, how much bigger is that second plan, the network, compared to the third network with the blue options?
Mm-hmm.
Because it is more costly for the employees to take that second plan. And they get less money in their health savings account. The deductible is higher, so what's the advantage of them taking that second plan? Because I think a lot of employees think, well, that's the second best plan, I don't want to take that last plan, you know what I mean?
Sure, sure.
And I try, I try to explain from to some employees, like, is it higher deductible and you get more money in your HSA account? You know, so I don't know, I just, I guess a good way to explain that to them.
Yeah, yeah, so the PPO network in plan design two and the PPO network in plan design three are the same network.
Okay.
The same PPO network.
What's the difference then? So silver sounds better, but it doesn't look better on paper.
Right, so let's compare the the benefits on plan two to only the PPO benefits on plan three.
Okay.
So individual deductible on plan two is 4,800. And we're not talking about the different networks, it's just the PPO network. The deductible on, the PPO deductible on plan three is 4,750. Okay, so very similar, even $50 less. What's going to be different is that the PPO out of pocket on plan three is 6,900. Or, excuse me, it's currently 6,550, it's going up to 6,900 at the renewal. And it's only 4,800 on plan two.
All right, so the $2,000 of the out, that's where it shows the out of pocket.
Exactly, exactly.
I guess the out of pocket and the deductible will be a little bit.
Right, so the out of pocket kind of is an explanation, so that's that's kind of an employee's worst case scenario. So in a given calendar year, if you incur medical claims and you reach your out of pocket, that's when Blue Cross is going to come in and pick up claims at 100%.
Any other?
They would have a little bit smaller network of the Blue Choice, that that's where their, the out of pocket is actually left, it's only 4,000.
Exactly.
Smaller option network.
Yep.
Which I have found that almost all of my doctors are in.
Right, right.
The Blue Choice?
Yeah, the Blue Choice.
Okay.
And you have the, this is, I should remember all this, but you have under the second plan, a design two, we have, it shows, it shows the deductibles, it shows two and under the plan three, it shows three. What's the, what is, what's, why is there two and three?
Sure, so on on plan two, the way we illustrate it is you have your in-network benefit slash
Okay.
out of network benefit. And then moving down to plan three, because there's really two networks at play in plan three, you have your Blue Choice benefit slash your PPO benefit slash the out of network benefit.
So those are two different networks, you can you can choose one network or the other?
Exactly, exactly. Now, what's nice about plan three is that your Blue Choice benefits and your PPO benefits are not separate buckets. So if I decide, you know what, let's say I'm an Elkhorn Township employee, I meet my Blue Choice deductible on plan three, and then I decide to go to a PPO provider, I only have the difference between those two numbers, not the additional, you know, 4,750 or 4,650. So they accumulate together concurrently.
All right, does anybody have any other questions? Otherwise, you have, we have a month to look through this. If you have any questions, they come to you, go to Erica, go into Erica and ask her, and she can either get the answers for you or she can get them from Michael. And then when we meet next meeting, we'll go through this again with Michael. And then if there's, if there, if we have a a general agreement, if I feel there's a consensus, we'll take a vote and and choose the policies that we wish to go with.
Great, just a kind of a timing reminder, so the deadline to make final plan decisions with Blue Cross is Monday, November 1st.
Okay.
So that'll be, that's after October's, October's meeting, but only a couple of days after.
So we actually, we need to make a decision at the October meeting, yeah.
Correct, now, we could, we can probably get that extended if we need to.
Yeah.
But let's operate under the timeline of of November 1st.
But if anybody has questions, go to Erica, she'll go to Michael. She'll get the information back to you, then next meeting, we'll, we'll make our decision and move forward, okay? Thank you, Michael.
Thanks, Michael, thank you.
All righty, let's go to, let's go to the the reports, we'll start with the assessor.
Thank you. First off, there will be an outreach program in this hall on Wednesday at 6:30. Commissioner from the Board of Review, Michael Kavanargi, will be speaking about how to appeal your assessed value of your residential property. Also, this is going to be co-sponsored by State Representative Marty Moylan, Cook County Commissioner Kevin Morrison, and State Senator Laura Murphy, along with State Rep Mark Walker. It's important that our taxpayers realize what their rights are under the Cook County property tax system. And this is one way that we attempt to get that word out to our residential taxpayers. This last two years has been more than challenging with the Cook County Assessor. At this particular point in time, even though we were open for appeals to the Cook County Assessor, to date, we don't have final numbers from the previous year. We had to assist our taxpayers with numbers from 2020. All right, we've filed those appeals, that was several months ago. Those residents still have not received any notification of change on those appeals. Now, the reason that this is problematic is until those are adjudicated through the county assessor, the Board of Review can't open. Townships that were open in April still have not gotten results, which means that the Board of Review hasn't been open at all. This is only one of the problems that we're facing. And the problems just simply seem to be exacerbated. I will tell you that I had a conversation with the Cook County Treasurer's Office last Friday. They're already forecasting that the second installment tax bill next year will be late. So the process has been mired in either inefficiency or an incompetency, take your pick. And I hate to say that because we've always had a wonderful relationship with the assessor's office because they know that we function as a taxpayer advocate. But for whatever reason, things have just gone off the rails. The latest problem that we're dealing with, and this is a severe problem, second installment tax bills went out and many, many exemptions were dropped from those tax bills. Now, with previous administrations with the county, we did C of E's. We expected within a two-week period of time that there would be amended tax bills sent out to the taxpayers. Not the case. We've gotten calls, one that I will bring up specifically. The homeowner is 98 years old. His senior frees and all of his exemptions were dropped. His son lives out of state. His tax bill should have been $700 because he's been on the frees, needless to say, a very long time. The tax bill that man got was $8,000. Now, you can only imagine the upset and the anxiety that this poor gentleman has gone through. Okay, son called our office. We found out that the gentleman was no longer driving, so his driver's license was expired. Thank you that you're not driving. However, now the son had to come in, get him a state ID, and file for the certificate of error, and of course, at this point in time, nothing has been done. We had a total as of Friday at 4 o'clock of 129 certificates of error that had not been acted upon. As you well know, tax bills are due this week. We have a Zoom meeting with the other townships tomorrow at 2 o'clock. It's rather ironic, we followed the protocols that we were told to follow by the county. And that was with the C of E's that we were to do DocuSign. DocuSign was introduced to us last year because of the COVID situation. The townships that followed the protocol have dropped exemptions. We have 129, Maine Township had 179. The townships that didn't use the protocol and submitted the C of E's via the township's email address didn't even have the problem. So you can imagine that our frustration is extremely high because at the very beginning of this process, we said, just wait for your amended bill. Well, that amended bill is not forthcoming. I called the Treasurer's Office on Friday, and I had a full head of steam, and I'm sure you understand why. Take into consideration that these people that are on the frees have gotten these inflated bills, it's caused them anxiety. And here's the deal, with the gentleman I talked to about, he doesn't have $8,000. Okay, second thing, if they don't pay it by the deadline, penalties are accrued. And that was the reason for my call to Maria Pappas's office. I'm sorry, but our homeowners are supposed to have some recourse, some, and I'm looking for the word right here, and I guess basically what it comes down to is the government is supposed to work for the people. The people are not supposed to work for the government. And in this situation, they're going to be working for the government unless we can get the county to waive the penalties on these tax bills. And the situation has gone from bad to worse for the last two years.
So what they're doing is they're saying that they should pay their bills, and then they'll resolve the the issues and refund them at a later date, which is who knows when?
Is who knows when, and again, if they don't pay them by the deadline, the penalties start accruing. And that's totally unfair. If if the county has not done their job, the resident should not have to pay a penalty for it. And that's the bottom line.
And this is a software problem, or why are these exemptions all dropped?
Well, we ran into the same problem with exemptions in the spring, where they lost a full week from all the townships. Maine called them last week and said, I've got 179 that you haven't processed. And they said, we don't have them. They called her back an hour later and said, we found them. Well, where were they and where are the rest of them? Our frustration level has just gone through the roof. And, you know, we've always tried to maintain, you know, a cordiality, if you will, but at this point, we're just telling the people, I'm sorry. You know, we wish we could tell you when you're going to get relief from this, but we have no idea.
So, Connie, what's the, what's the response of the county in regards to not just the dropping of the exemptions, but what's the response in 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 totality?
In totality, oops. And that's not acceptable, it's just not acceptable. You know, we try and do the very best we can for our taxpayers, but we also realize that we have a responsibility to do the best we can for our taxpayers. And what we've experienced in the last two years has, I've served under four assessors and 32 years representing our taxpayers and never have my staff and I had the levels of frustration that we have had in the last two years. I would love to give you a simple explanation for it, but I'd have to refer you to the county. They don't answer their phones. We don't even bother to tell the taxpayer to call the county because they don't answer their phones. We only have one satellite that's close to us, which is Skokie, and they do the very best they can. And we've always had a very good working relationship with them. How do you tell somebody in their 80s to go downtown Chicago?
No, you can't.
I mean, that's almost irresponsible at this point in time.
Then it's not something they should be burdened with either.
No, it's not something they should be burdened with, you hit the nail right on the head. We have, we should have expectations that our elected officials will be doing the job they're supposed to do. And I hate to go on like this, but you can hear my frustration.
So overall, where do we stand in terms of assessments? Where do we stand, I mean, you've made it clear where we stand with the issues with the lost exemptions, but overall, where do we, where does the taxpayer stand in terms of the the next tax bills coming and what to expect or not expect?
Well, obviously, you know, the tax bills went out, there were an inordinate number of dropped exemptions, whether it was via age, which we, you know, the county has done periodically, prove you're alive sort of thing, or just errors. All I can tell you at this point is that until, hopefully, you know, sometime this week, they're going to process these. But at that point, they've got to get a tax bill out to these people. Well, great, maybe the taxpayer is out of town now and they don't forward, or whatever the situation. My point is, there absolutely should be no penalties for any of the people who had dropped exemptions. That should be waived, which is why I called Treasurer Pappas's office.
And what's the, what's the situation with the county's assessment process right now? Property assessment?
Well, as, you know, you know, I told you when we were, you know, open for for appeals and we filed a lot of appeals, we still have not had responses on those appeals. Months have gone by. Now, as I told
So the Board of Review has, I mean
They can't open until the the assessor does his job. So I'm going to have an outreach program here on Wednesday night. And I'm sure Commissioner So I'm going to have an outreach program here on Wednesday night, and I'm sure Commissioner Cabanargi, who is our new commissioner, will allow residents to prefile, but they don't have the numbers either. And so that prefiling would simply be predicated on eventually getting some numbers from the county. My suggestion to our taxpayers is you wait until we actually have numbers so that we can put evidence together that supports your appeal.
And the people, the representatives, elected officials that are attending, can they have any influence this process, or are they here just to show their face?
Well, interesting question. Obviously, our -- we used to be represented by Commissioner Patlack, and we had -- he had always been incredibly generous with his time as far as outreach programs go. Then via the election, Kami Went became our representative to the Board of Review. We were in her district, and I had done an outreach program with her. We have since been redistrict again, and so now Michael Cabanargi. So this will be the first time that we will have an outreach program with him and to, in essence, evaluate, you know, how that goes. When it comes to the other people who have cosponsored the event, most of them take the opportunity to come and meet with our taxpayers and present some of their, you know, usually it's being introduced, but they will have tables available for programs or whatever that they would like to--
But since the issue is taxes or having problems with the property tax issues, do they have any ability to influence that in any way? Or, I mean, is there any value that they can bring to the table?
Probably not. From the standpoint that, I don't know if you read the numbers, but last year, Assessor Kegy raised the total assessed value in Cook County by over $6 billion. The Board of Review knocked that down to $2 billion. So right now, I would suggest that the relationship between the assessor and the Board of Review is less than cordial. Now, that's just one part of it. Assessor Kegy also just put out a paper, because as you know, a majority of your tax bill is education, correct? About two-thirds, almost two-thirds of your tax bill. Assessor Kegy has put out a paper stating that he feels that education should be funded through the federal government and the state. This, to me, is problematic. We need to maintain local control of our schools. And I don't think that I'm speaking out of school when I say the federal government couldn't coordinate a one-car funeral procession, let alone turning our schools over to them. So there are a lot of issues going on here, none of which I'm particularly happy with.
Okay. All right, does anybody have any questions for Connie? On that positive note--
Sorry.
--that positive note, we'll move to the clerk's report.
She's 100% right.
Would you mention too something about the agency committee too?
Yeah, I did forget that. Okay, well, my report is less stressful. Just three things I wanted to mention. First of all, the TOI Annual Educational Conference will be virtual this year. I did hand out to all the trustees the form to apply to attend those sessions, and just encourage you to do that. It's well worthwhile. You can give the form to Paul. He will register you. And I did check on the TOI website today to see if there might be any details on any classes. There's nothing up there yet, but there's always things for different positions, trustees, supervisors, everything, so it's well worth it. The other thing is the agency grant committee, we did have all the applications sent out. I think it was early September, and they are due by November 1st. And then we will start to evaluate each organization and each request. And this will give us a lot more time to do it than we have in the past, which will be great. And then the other thing is, we were all, the trustees and supervisor and I were in the parade in Elk Grove last week. It went very well, and it was very well received. We had our food pantry bus and one of our senior buses, and just it was very gratifying. There was a lot of people who just thanked us for what we do or clapped as we went by and had a lot of fun, ran out of candy. So that is my report.
I enjoyed singing with the Sister Cities of Sicily behind us.
Yeah, they were behind us. Hearing the music over and over.
All right, any other questions for Sue Ellen? Yeah, and coordinate with Paul on, because we're beginning to work on the budget, and so the timing of you with your committee with the recommendation fits in with the budget process that we're working on right now. Okay, any questions for Sue Ellen? Okay, if not, then the supervisors' report. First of all, I do want to thank Sue Ellen for coordinating with the help of some of the board members here, the participation in the two parades. I think this is just another example, it's small, but I think it's another example of how we need to maintain a presence in the community, not so much because, not so much because we want to be out there walking around, but it just makes the township more known and gives us more exposure so that our services have more exposure, because I still would argue that the township is one of the best forms of government that nobody knows about. And the only way we're going to get this out there is take every opportunity we can to have that food pantry truck, to have that senior services bus, to be able to talk to organizations, to bring people in for tours, in order for them to become more familiar with what we do and how we do it, and the value, the cost value that we bring to the equation. Because like Connie was saying, the schools account for actually, if you go through, about 65.5% of the bill of our tech, property tax bill. And the townships are less than 1%. With the services we provide cost the average homeowner less than $100 a year. And so, you know, people need to know about our services and also realize how we bring a real value to the table from a service point of view and a cost point of view. Okay, let me go through a couple of things that get you guys up to date. Paul and I met with Palatine Township this morning. They're going to come back to us with a proposal for plowing our snow in the winter, as well as for brush pickup in the summer. We'll consider that proposal, see if it fits our budget or if it makes sense. Obviously, we are outsourcing all of our road and bridge services. All of them are covered right now, with the exception of the snow plowing and the brush pickup. Well, we do, the actual brush pickup is covered right now, but we probably would combine this into one vendor, and we just need to find a cost-effective vendor that is also provides quality. And Palatine does this for Barrington, Palatine does that, I think, for Inverness. And so it would be a natural extension for us to outsource those services to them, which they're very familiar with and which they do for other organizations, as long as it fits our budget and is, makes sense financially. We also, on the remediation front, and the USTs and the USTs in the back, we're waiting for final documentation from the I E P A. There was some confusion with the documentation that was sent to us. It does appear, though, that no further remediation will be required and that the previous N F R will remain in place, and we just need to meet the standards of that old N F R, and that new remediation won't need to be done. However, before we move forward, we want to make sure we have all the proper documentation on this decision from the I E P A and that our attorneys sign off on it before we do so. Now, the one issue on this, though, is bike safety and challenge course will probably be delayed until spring. We won't be able to start construction there. And then, depending on where the site, where we're building, constructing the two courses, we may have a, if it overlaps in the area which is considered part of the remediation area or contamination area, we may need to develop a site safety plan, have that overseen by another consultant, and it's just an ongoing, but there is an end of the tunnel here. So the bottom line is, is it doesn't, we need any further remediation. We just need the proper documentation that we have in place to verify that and cover our legal requirements. And then bike safety and challenge course should probably done next spring, but we may have a little extra expense with that due to environmental issues.
So if I hear you right, what you're saying is if they, if the developers that are going to be doing the work happen to--
The vendors, yeah.
--happen to disturb a certain area, that potentially can be--
Then we have to have a site safety plan. Then we have it overseen by an environmental company that documents that it was properly executed, and, you know, and then we have to have the proper documentation for that too. So every step of this process, when you have contamination of the remediation process and then the follow-on work that's done in that area, is very, is, you have to do this very meticulously to make sure that you meet all the legal requirements and that you don't put yourself into a long-term liability issue.
And I have one more question.
Yeah.
And then, is that something that is handled by Elk Grove?
Yes.
And not the township?
No, no, this is done, that would be done by the township. The Elk Grove, the way our contract read, is if there was any further remediation required from the, on any of our property here, that Elk Grove Village would be responsible for that expense. They have now, we found when we took the USTs out, which was our expense, what we found when we did that, that there was contamination there over the levels, the standards that were, that are established as being acceptable. However, that's what they were when it was approved the first time. The I E P A allowed, gave them some wiggle room. And so the contamination levels are basically the same as before. The I E P A has come back and said, "Okay, we're going to say that's fine. You don't need to do any further remediation. You have the same, we're going to give you the same situation you had before, and we'll just leave that in place." So the village won't have to pay for remediation. They paid for all the legal work to get all this done, but they won't have to pay for the remediation. Now, once that's completed and once we have everything documented and we know that this is the decision and this is, in the I E P A, is, we have the proper documentation that this is the I E P A decision and that we can run with this now, then any construction we do there, we just have to be aware of what, where those contaminated areas are, even though they don't need any further remediation. If you disturb them, you have to have a safety plan. You have to do it under certain, in certain ways.
Okay.
So much more, much longer explanation than probably we needed here. On shredding, we are, we do have a joint shredding day with the Mount Prospect Lions Club. They'll be on October 16th at the Recreation Recplex in Mount Prospect. That's off of 83, what is that, Vince, 83? 83 and Dempster. We'll have two trucks there. It'll be from 9:00 to 12:00. Lions Club are providing workers. I also would like whatever trustees are available that day to be present, from 9:00 to 12:00. I think, Paul, will the vendor provide most of the people to unload the cars, or do we need to provide that? You know, they're bringing shredding, the shredding boxes, are we going to have to pick those up and put them in the shredding trailers?
One challenge happens is they have the things that you put out for your recycling and just go to the car and pour the stuff in there, give them back the container, and then when the container gets full, it goes over to the truck and either they shred it on the side or they dump it in something to take it back to their thing.
Okay, so will we be, will we be working to take it out of the cars, or do they have, does the vendor have people that helps do that?
No, that's what you, that's what the volunteers are for.
Okay, all right. So that's why we want some trustees there to help out.
I think we've got the--
And then we've got Lions.
We've got Lions coming.
We got Lions Club guys. So this is a joint. We've got it in, we have had it in a newsletter. We're going to have press releases out, put an ad in the journal, we'll put it on our website, the Lions Club. Thanks to Vince, they'll have it downtown on the board, and then we'll see how this goes. And if it goes well, you know, we'll continue it, maybe even expand it, depending on what the demand is. So I want to thank Vince. Vince has been working this one. We're looking at maybe doing another one with the Elk Grove Village, Elk Grove Village Lions, but we're doing it this time first with the, maybe do one fall, one spring with the different Lions Club. But Vince has been sort of coordinating with the Mount Prospect Lions Club to make sure this goes smoothly. He's a member of the Lions there. Okay. The V S O office, Veteran Service Office, they should be moving in in mid-October. They will have the office open on Mondays and Tuesdays. The Veteran Service Office is a, is a State of Illinois program. What they do is they provide advice and guidance to veterans in terms of how to get their benefits and how to access the different services that are available to them. I think this is a great program. I know the V F Ws have already reached out to us saying, "Well, can we work with them?" So what we'll probably do is set up a lunch or something where our V S O representative, the guy that works, is going to be working here out of our offices. We have an office designated for him on Mondays and Tuesdays. Maybe we'll have him get together with the V F W reps in the area that work with Veteran Services and see if they can coordinate, but I'll leave it to them to do that. But this is a great step forward. If you remember, we did, we did do something similar to this about four years ago, but it didn't work well, but it was, it was straight, it was a very specific service, counseling for vets, combat vets that had PTSD. And it just never really got off the, got off the ground, and it was a little too specific. So this is a much broader program. So I'm looking forward to getting started. The Community Empowerment Fund, that's a 503, 501 C3 organization that was set up to take funds, to receive funds, donations, to support projects in Elk Grove Township that served, that had provided a benefit to the township, and in particular, helped supplement services that the township provided, for instance, particularly G A E A, where they needed more money than they get with G A and E A. And this fund would provide our social services people with additional funding to help them get through a difficult period. I went through the bylaws, and I was worried about how they were written, and it went, sat down with our attorneys to make sure, well, to look at what maybe needed to be done to bring them into compliance with what I think is maybe legally or liability-wise that needs to be done. And I'll probably be, probably be coming out with a new set of bylaws. I will sit down with the chairman of the organization of the current committee, or the current fund, and what they will need to do then is if he agrees, he will present this to their board, vote on it to change the bylaws. And at that point, if they vote to change and to put in place these new bylaws, what it will do is it will, it will provide more auditing capabilities. It will, it'll provide more of a trail on financial, on financial transactions, and it will also allow the township to have a little bit more control over what's done with the money and not done with the money, because this is, this money's being donated to the township that we're, that's going into this fund so people can get a tax deduction on it. But this is, it just needs, there needs to be more control on it, and that's what those bylaws will do. After I've sat down with the chairman, I'll come back to the board and explain what's going on. Okay, what else here? Oh, we're looking at doing, because we're not probably doing the bike and challenge course this fiscal year, that will get probably pushed out the next fiscal year, it was budgeted for-- fiscal year. It was budgeted for this year, so money was budgeted for those two programs. What we may do is use that budgeted funds if it, if it, if it, if the supply, if there's, if there's enough supplies and if there's enough time to do it to replace the fencing on the east side, the, on the side the citizens live or the residents live, to clean that up, make it sharper. That fence has fallen apart and we would just do that, that east side. And with the idea being that eventually it has to be done anyway. We have some funds now that are not being used that we can apply to this. And, and I think it'd be good for us and our fellow, and our, our neighbors. So that's something that's being considered at this particular point as well, too. And finally, just, just as a reminder to everybody, just be very conscious in this current political environment of what you say and how you say it. I think you, as representatives of Elk Grove Township, even when you're out as a private citizen, even when you're out speaking your own mind, it still will reflect on the township. And, and what we don't want is that reflection to have any sort of, to have a negative impact on, on, on the services we provide or the people or people using the services we provide and, or anything that distracts from us providing those services. So just be aware of what, when and where you're, you're expressing your opinions and just be very, very cognizant of that. You know, we're just asking, just ask you to be civil and polite and make sure that you're aware of the situation you're in when you're expressing your opinions. Okay, does anybody have any questions on any of that? No? Okay. Guys, can I have a motion to accept the elected officials' reports?
I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. And we're going to go to, no, there's no old business. We're going to go to the new business. Resolution 202112 is the schedule of regular board meetings for 2022. Are there any questions? Any questions? Any? If not, can I have a motion to approve the?
Yeah, just, just clarification.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it'd be good just to point out, you know, like the March, for example. You know, it's not the fourth.
No, that's right. That's a good point. Yeah, I, I took supervisor's privilege and, and moved that one a week earlier because I will be gone the week, that week.
Oh, but usually, don't we do February, March? We do the budget anyway.
Yeah, we'll be done. We should be done. We should finish the budget in February. March would only be a situation where if we were, if there was an issue or the budget got drug out for some reason, then we would do it in March. And that's part of the reason why I had a change, just so I could be here to make sure to walk the budget all the way through.
Oh, I thought it had to, I thought it had to be publicly posted.
This isn't a timing one. This is just, the way we have it structured is that in January we'll do the tentative and in February we'll actually, we'll actually present and vote on the, the budget. However, if it gets delayed for some reason or, or there's an issue, a quorum issue or whatever it is, then March would be the fallback. And I just wanted to make sure I was here for that, that fallback date. So that's the one month. That's the, that's the, it'll be the third Monday, not the fourth Monday. All the rest are the fourth Mondays.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? I have a motion to approve Resolution 202112.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi?
Aye. Resolution 202113, this is the schedule of office closing dates for 2022. These are the same dates that we use this year, except I, we added Martin Luther King's birthday, which is a federal holiday. So it's the same schedule, just with Martin Luther King's birthday added as a day off. Any questions? Okay, if not, can I have a motion to approve the schedule of office closing 202113?
So moved.
A second.
All in favor? I'm sorry, let's do a roll call on that, too.
Okay. Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee Wotecki? I'm sorry, Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi?
Aye. All right, I'm going to talk about these both together. These are the levies. One is for the Town Fund General Assistance. The other one is the Road Department. These are, this is what we are, the levy for the, the new board members is the, is the amount that we are requesting or we are, we are telling Cook County that we need to be, that we need to raise and that they need to account for in the property taxes. So we're saying this is the money that we need to fund our operation. This levy, well, and we, that's for the Town Fund and the General Assistance and the Road Department, which even though the Road Department or the road, road and bridge, it no longer exists, there's still a levy for the Road Department because we still have roads and we still have obligations to take care of unincorporated areas, the, you know, the roads and the bridges. And so there is still a levy there at, at, at this point. At some point, it may go away, but at this point, it's still there. These, both of these levies are unchanged and this is the ninth year they have not changed. So we have not raised our request for tax money in nine years and we've been able to use that levy consistently for nine years to meet all our obligations and at the same time increase our services. So at this point, I will point out one other thing. If you go down the line items in here, not all of them are, make all this, all the sense in the world, because it's really the bottom line number that matters. So some of these, some of these numbers in here are just placeholders, but it's the bottom line number that's all, that's all the county cares about and that's what the county is then going to use. Now, from an education point of view, I know I shouldn't be doing this, but from an education point of view, they will increase our levy request by 3%. And they do that because they assume that they're not going to be able to collect all the funds that we requested because of Connie's successful operation of appeals and exemptions. So that all that money that we, they project that they'll be able to raise for us won't necessarily get raised, so they put 3% on there to cover, what do they call it, Paul? To cover?
Cost loss.
Cost loss. So that number actually will be 3% higher that they use to try to, to try to, to put out in property taxes, and they do that for everybody, I guess. They do, and, and, and then they will collect the taxes and generally we get what we, we eventually collect what we've requested. It doesn't always come in at the same time. It comes in over time. Okay? Okay, and that's so. Those are the two ordinances, 20213 and 20214RD. Like I said, this is the ninth year of not raising, of keeping our levy the same and our share of the property tax bill continues to be less than 1%. Are there any questions? If there's no questions, can I get a motion to approve ordinance 20213 and 202104RD?
So moved. You do it together?
Yeah, I'm doing it together.
Can we do it together? Okay.
Second.
Okay, second, it's been, a motion has been made and seconded. Can we have a roll call vote?
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi?
Aye. All right, the last thing here, and this is not a, this is not an action item, but the fiscal year ending 2021 audit report, so it's March of, end of March of 2021. The audit report, it was, was supposed to be submitted at the end of this month. The auditor has gone in and got an extension of 60 days, and this is the result of a delay in the, in the internal review that our auditor does. It's not a problem. We've got the extension, but you've got in there the draft, the draft audit, and then they will come in in October and present and talk through it. So any, look through it. Any questions you have, make notes that when they're here next, at the October meeting, you can ask those questions. They have, they will, they, they, like I said, we have an extension of 60 days and the, the audit report will be submitted within the time that's required then. Any questions on the audit report? Okay, does anybody have anything, well, does anybody have anything else they need to raise? No? Okay. If there is nothing else, senior trustee, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Is there?
Second.
Okay, it's been, the motion's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Yeah?